I think the business in there has to almost be an appointment business. Just too many cars coming and going. It's just not a good place. It really isn't. People get seriously hurt in that world. I just don't think it's... That's just me. I just got a business that goes in there, like a real estate business, something that's gonna have appointments come in a couple people at a time. Just a restaurant there to me doesn't work. It just doesn't work.
I would like it to work.
Oh, I'd love it to work. And then if it works, it's even worse.
Well, I think if it works...
Then you got twenty spaces where you go...
She's gonna move.
While Willie's just open.
Yeah. While Willie's just open. Until next week. Two weeks. So that's how I'm almost thinking is that if it doesn't work, she's definitely staying in this.
We'll change our agreed.
We'll just not agree either, but have you looked at other spaces?
No. Other spaces, I can, again, the right hand side, I already cut down all the three, I beat huge tree because my neighbor and me, we negotiate so before he hires someone two spaces and after when I buy his property and I ask him, he say, okay for him.
You also...
Yes. And so right now...
She purchased it last year.
Yeah. Because I cut down the tree, maybe I can face the, you know, the ground so maybe my car can put there too, the dumpster or cars. So I understand that neighbor complained about last time in the other property meeting, they say, what about the dumpster? City council asked me too. I say, one, if I need, I have to run the dumpster too. I don't wanna bother. For me, I have, you know, I can't imagine the smell, I can't handle too. So I don't wanna bother people, I don't wanna let people complain me.
So you're saying you take the rubbish home every night? No, I don't know. What are you gonna do with it?
Put in a dumpster. But not, especially it's not meat. Not meat, so the smell not that bad. Actually, for the restaurant, yeah, they have like a meat, so next day, especially summertime, it's very bad. But mine doesn't have meat, real meat, only vegetables, so I think not that much.
Rotten vegetables don't smell too good either.
We would comply with whatever's required there in the space for a dumpster.
Comments? Comments for Brian?
You know, I'm torn.
I know.
They're within the regulations, right? Barely.
What do you do?
Right, it's not something, it's not something that's in and out. You know, you're gonna sit there.
That could be slow.
If there was some way to come up with a... The neighbors' concerns need to be to block the cars from going through, that's what I argue. And parking on baby well the backside, right? That's the true main thing. If there was some way to configure the parking to get two more spaces in there and block that back out there, I'd be concerned, I'd consider it, right? I don't see being able to, I don't see being able to overcome the limitations of the site rate, you know?
I sometimes, I just think...
Mr. Franklin.
Same.
I'd love to see it work. I don't see how it just...
Dorado?
Location is just tough. You know, I mean, you look at some of the other businesses that are on Southern Avenue and compared to your parking there.
You know, restaurants all have excess parking.
Yeah.
On the street, this one doesn't.
Corner of Pond Street.
It's a tough street.
It's a tough place.
Block.
Can't park across the street, can't park at the back. I mean, there've been a grandlock a bunch. I always park up A, you know, and I never even thought about it, you know? Never thought about pulling over on Southern Avenue. So that's just gonna tell you, you know, her customers are gonna do the same thing. You're gonna, you know, inundate some neighborhoods, things.
Maybe we should see if the owner wants to withdraw without prejudice and then maybe there's something that we thought of later on. But she owns the property, she's gonna...
Oh, no, and you wanna do something, I get it. I get that. I get that. I mean, you wish it was a business that had appointments. So you get people coming, going, even have three or four cars at a time is even enough.
Take out only...
When it was on, when she was considering purchasing it, I came talking to Saduka about it and it is, a restaurant isn't allowed use of that property. We didn't anticipate the sort of, I mean, it's the reason she purchased the property, to open a restaurant there.
Because of one time...
It sounds like no food would be, any, no food service would be something you'd be agreeable to in that spot. But we would like to have an opportunity to withdraw without prejudice if that's possible.
This is Chairman N. Z seventeen dash seven three, lucky you chose for a binding change to use from an ouselet to a vegetarian cafe at the premises number seven forty nine, Southern Quincy, I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second?
Second.
A motion seen and all favor. All in. East M is Z seventeen seventy four, Arista Development LLC, Professor from Flatlin Bay, to construct a hundred unit residential development, premise number one thirteen, Newport Avenue. Representative, the applicant here. Counselor, busy now.
Just like Mr. Chairman, after this, you can get rid of me. Chairman, members of the board, for the record again, Edward Fleming, on behalf of Arista Development LLC. This involves a proposal for the property at one dash thirteen Newport Avenue. It's an industrial B zoning district, despite the fact that it's directly across the North Quincy MBTA station. Arista Development is a professional development company with offices in Norwood. And Arista has been involved in a number of different proposals within this area that I've been fortunate enough to be involved in, including the Walgreens development and the new TD Bank in North Quincy. I'm joined tonight by Scott Waymoth and John Stewart, who are the principals of Arista, along with Jim Burke from DeSalle Burke Engineering, who's the site engineer. Jim will talk about the site plan in a moment. And Steve Devine and Ken Coria from Cape FT Architects, who designed a beautiful building in this location. This is a twenty-five thousand, four hundred and sixty square foot park that are located in an industrial B zoning district. And interestingly enough, a lot of that neighborhood, certainly in that proximity of this particular proposal, is zone industrial B, which really doesn't fit the makeup of the neighborhood anymore. It clearly isn't an appropriate zoning for this particular location, which is directly across the street from the North Quincy MBTA station. Industrial use there, especially with all the new development, the residential development across the street with the Avalon Development, the brand new hotel on the other side of Arlington Street, that's a beautiful new facility that was permitted by the planning board, industrial B zoning doesn't make any sense. So this proposal, or this site, is right now improved by, I'd say, a deteriorated metal structure. It's been vacant for, it's actually had uses in there for a number of years, but I believe it's significantly vacant as we speak today. This is an ideal transit oriented development, especially with all the exciting development opportunity or discussion directly across the street at the North Quincy MBTA station. So the proposal before you tonight provides for the removal of the deteriorated metal industrial building and the replacement, not with a hundred units, which was the initial proposal that was made. That proposal has now been revised to provide for eighty residential units. The plans that you have before you provide for the eighty residential unit proposal. But the original proposal that was presented to the planning board sought a hundred residential units with a hundred parking spaces. During the discussion and the review of the planning department, the plans were revised to eighty residential units, remained at a hundred, a hundred parking spaces, now provides one point two five spaces per unit. The new building also removed the fifth floor that was initially proposed residential and now consists of four residential stories over two parking levels. There's garage structured parking on this site. That parking is now accessible only from Arlington Street. Initially, in the first proposal with a hundred units, it had an access or egress from Newport Avenue, as well as Arlington Street. And during this discussions with the planning department, the plans were revised when the unit count was changed and now the garage is a two level garage that has access from Arlington Street alone. Really, which I think alleviated a lot of concerns of the department and the city's traffic in the area. As I indicated, we've already sought and obtained approval from the planning board through site plan, site plan review. This has already been undertaken, a significant amount of review by the department, by the city departments, and also by independent peer reviewed consultants. And now what we're seeking from this board is a number of different requests. Industrial B zoning doesn't allow for residential. Interestingly enough, industrial B zoning is what Crown Colony is, and we did, there's a new five hundred unit residential development being built there by the Flatley Company. What we're seeking here is a used area, to allow for the residential use. We're also seeking a floodplain special permit because the site is located within a floodplain. This matter has been reviewed by the city's conservation commission and an order of conditions has been issued. And Jim Burke can talk about the design of the plans as compliant with floodplain regulations by lifting the levels of living area above the floodplain. We're also seeking various variances from the dimensional requirements. This site is surrounded by roads. It's Newport Avenue, West Quantum Street, and Arlington Street. It has significant challenging issues with regard to its location, with regard to the topography, because the site drops off of, off of West Quantum Street and Arlington Street and is much lower level on Newport Avenue. So there's a significant amount of challenges, both financial and site challenges, that provide the grounds for the relief that we're requesting from the dimensional requirements as well. We think that this proposed residential use is absolutely ideal for this. Right? Mr. Chairman?
I know. It is awesome.
But it's a, it's a great proposal. It really brings it into conformity with the area around it. Councilor Ian Kane absolutely understood that as well. We had a neighborhood meeting, attended by a few of the neighbors, not a lot of neighbors, but by some neighbors, and Councilor Kane was in attendance. Both Scott and John met with Councilor Kane a number of times and talked to him about his thoughts about this, and he actually submitted a letter of support for the proposed, to the planning department. He saw the benefit to this. Not only in the redesign and the reuse of the site, but also the incredible tax revenue that's gonna be generated from this proposal. And Scott and John have also worked cooperatively with the folks across the street on Arlington Street. Arlington Street is one of the craziest streets in the city of Quincy where it had, when it was used by working. And now it's gonna be a real true street. It's gonna have sidewalks on both sides, it's gonna have landscaping amenities on both sides. And in discussions with the planning department, Scott Waymoth agreed that he'd continue to work with the folks across the street at the hotel in making sure that the ultimate and final design of Arlington Street actually improves that dramatically. Arlington still, street will still be a one-way from West Quantum Street to Newport Avenue, but it will be improved route of travel. Right now, you...
The craze, aren't we, Steve?
The craze. It's crazy.
Sorry.
It is. So that's another wow, Mr. Chairman.
Steve. How many bedrooms, how many bedrooms, how many units?
So I'm gonna turn this over, you have those questions first, so I'll turn this over to Steve to talk about the architecture.
Thanks.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Stephen Devine, I'm the principal with Cape FT Architects. And hang on, I hope you won't hold that against me. We're formally in Quincy. So, as Ed mentioned very nicely, we have a six story building, which consists primarily of two levels of parking, followed by four levels of units. The entrance to the parking is off Arlington Street, in and out, and there's an internal ramp that services twelve levels of the parking. Get my little cheat sheet out here. There's forty-seven spaces on the first floor and fifty-four spaces on the upper level. It makes provisions for handicap parking, and as you can see, there are two stairways, one of which egress is directly out to Newport Ave., and this is a lobby which egress is up above to West Quantum Street. Also at these levels, we've made provisions for some mechanical spaces like sprinkler rooms, we planned out trash rooms, and also there'll be an area designated for the electric transformer and some various storage for bikes and such like that, that we anticipate the residents would use. Total parking is a hundred and one spaces. This is a basic diagram of a residential level, and the basic planning principle was an H. So it connects like this, and that was designed intentionally to optimize the corners, because as you get up a little higher, you've got some pretty good views there. And it worked out very nicely that way. It also affords us these nice patio plaza areas for the residents, and we've incorporated into the plan a residence exercise room and a residence meeting room. So people who will be using this building have a place to congregate, meet, exercise, and stuff like that. Also, the unit breakdown, there are eighty apartments. Fifty-one of the apartments are one bedroom, which range from seven hundred and eleven square feet to eight hundred and eighty-five square feet. Twenty-five of the units are two bedrooms, and those range from nine hundred and eighteen square feet to nine hundred and eighty-seven square feet. And we also have four studio units, which are four hundred and fifty-nine square feet to four hundred and seventy square feet. We've also made provisions in working with planning to incorporate some nice vegetation areas, trees up on the patio decks, and there'll be some outdoor seating and some planter areas and such like that, which would be very nice. So that's a typical plan as it progresses up the building, the units are stacked, they're pretty typical. Up on the roof, we've made provisions for an outdoor roof deck for the residents as well, because the views up there are pretty good, and we anticipate they will be.
Those are cozy.
Uh, they told us, not yet, no. Can't say what they'll do down the road, but wouldn't that be nice? No, just an outdoor seating area where people can hang out and they can have a party up there, whatever, like a birthday party or something small like that. There's not a lot of seating up here, it's more incidental. And also, the rest of the roof deck would be designated for event serving and other units and such like that. And there are two means of egress, and the lobby elevator comes up to the roof there. As you can see from the renderings, the building incorporates a variety of different materials. We have a brick base, which is very nice, and breaking the scale of the building down so it kind of feels like a residential building, we carried those brick walls up. We also introduced some other materials to break the scale down, so it doesn't seem like this big massive building, and it feels residential. Down the bottom, you see, this is the parking area somewhat, which is all gray at, at the front of the building where you have the entrance. And as you progress around, this is the back. These openings are for ventilation in the parking areas, and you can see the roof deck example right here, and these are residential pieces. They have a combination of windows and what we would call Juliet balconies, so they're not physical balconies, we go out on, they have doors that open up with a glass rail. So we work hard to try to make the building, you know, very nice visually and fit into the area. We have some samples of some material, if anybody's interested, we can present those as well. So at this point, nobody missed anything?
Would that be a wood building too?
Excuse me?
Is that gonna be nailed wood?
That's the plan.
Combustible wood?
It would be.
Oh, I know these wood buildings seem to be perfect like.
The basic planning principle is wood on top of a podium, which you've seen, you know, that's pretty common now.
Any renewable energy in the building?
Well, we will be following the regulation in Quincy pertaining to the energy, we will be doing an energy study.
I know. Is there any renewable energy?
No, I guess not. I don't think we've got that far enough planning.
Any questions?
These are the other elevations as you progress around.
Where are you going?
Thank you.
We have a moment for Jim to come up to the second.
I should be brief, very brief. Again, Jim Burke, DeSalle Burke Associates. As Ed stated early, we had an original design, a hundred units, and actually the building itself was depressed to about eight and a half, elevation eight and a half is the garage floor. Since the revision, the architect and the applicant, who's fairly well hands-on, kind of designed a building that fit well with the grade, so you know, coming in off Arlington Street, we lifted it all the way up to eleven and a half, brought the building entirely out of the floodplain, given the fact that it's less subject to coastal storm flow, which we didn't have to do in compensatory storage. So that kind of solved that problem. It also created a greater separation for groundwater dispersal. You see those two blue squares kind of underneath the building, allowed us to do some recharge a lot easier. And you get two forty unit cul-de-sac systems with open bottom of the stone, buffers all the stormwater from all vents with an overflow to the city system. Right now, there's nothing out there. Here, a site that's completely unpaved, so from a stormwater perspective, it's quite an improvement. All new utilities, so creating a blighted site, I can't do it.
Will Robin turn them up?
Maybe next time. That's it, if you have any questions?
Any question?
Said I'm keepers.
This is shit we have had.
So that is the office presentation.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Thank you. Does anyone want to speak in favor? Marshall? Want to speak in favor? Brent Marshall, want to speak in favor? No? Yeah, I know. Seconded, third, no one speak in favor? I have one here from the DPW, case number Z seventeen seventy four, where you, you give up parts of the project and have no comments, so I guess you'll give your homework. Is there anyone opposed around the side? First call, second call, third call.
Another surprise.
Make sure you get that right on you with John in video.
Stand over there.
Six and two grand wall road, okay. Twenty-four thousand square foot lot, eighty units, it's about three hundred square feet per dwelling. Okay. In the zoning code, it doesn't define what you can do in an industrial zone, because residential structures were not permitted in our industrial zone. We don't even have it in the zoning code. I think at least it should go to the minimum five hundred square feet per dwelling unit of the Business C zoning code, which makes absolutely no sense. And that, that's way too dense even to begin with, but that would make this at like forty-eight, I think. Are they asking for a parking waiver? For variance?
No, they have plenty of parking.
But there is no excess parking in that deck. I'm gonna make some friends to go visit people and hang on that deck and stuff. And when we talk about parking, there are some people that do have multiple cars, so they're doing a very dense project right next door to that, and, you know, it's just very dense. It's in a flood zone. I'm against developing dense properties in a flood zone, and I just have to stay consistent. I mean, I, I don't understand our zoning, I'm trying to figure it out, but industrial zoning, we need to add what the specifications are, so therefore, you know, we don't just leave it up to the board. So I would ask that they come back with a less dense project, knock off a couple floors, make it less, and therefore, you know, not be such a...
Should we make it farmland?
Should we make it farmland? I would love if Maricoke would buy that piece of land and make it all place that water can come into. I mean, we're, we're really covering everything. Don't remember that, they are building six hundred units right across the street, so we're getting to a point where Quincy might become overdeveloped, and therefore, it's gonna hurt all the developers who are building right now in Quincy, because when nine-nine-nine Hancock, when they were trying to rent that, they weren't able to, and they made that into condominiums right now. I drove up Bridge Street tonight, and since that got constructed, all cars parked all along Bridge Street and stuff, so it is gonna need to more cars. Right now, there's no cars there. They asked for a hundred before, they did go down to eighty, that, that was very good. So they are willing to reduce their project if you ask them to, and I would ask you guys to maybe ask them to reduce it.
Thank you, John. And no one else would call up, probably, here and close. I'm in favor of the project, and it's really pretty, nice job, eighty units, got a hundred parking spaces, they're one bedrooms, most of them, and they got some studios in there, twenty-five two bedrooms. I think it's a nice part under W building.
For fifteen years, I lived at Sagewell Place on the twelfth floor, looked at the site, because it was disgusting. And wonderful place to put something right by the T station, I mean, you can't be any more convenient. Supermarket right behind you, I mean, really, this is a prime place, the biggest type of private W. In favor.
Yeah, it looks great, I can't wait to see that whole place gone.
Good luck building, but I'm in favor.
And a motion please.
Mr. Chairman, number Z seventeen dash seven four, Arista Development LLC, floodplain barriers to construct a eighty unit residential development, premises number one, Newport Ave., make it closer to the ground, the barriers.
Second? A motion, stand down, all favor. All in.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Brother under tonight, case number Z seventeen seventy five, Joseph Lee for variance finance, we add the second level, the farmers' board, grid deck, number seventy-one shore app, the applicant representative here.
Name of the chairman, Joseph Lee, thirty-three eighty-eight Highland Ave., Quincy, Mass. Regarding Mr. Palzac, this is our architect, Rich Metrakis. Before you...
Do you need a yard? Did you say you need a yard?
No. This is the only head. I'll see if you can put on a second level to this house. This is a piece of property, a couple weeks ago, I met the guy next door. Tell him it has tremendous views, everybody has tremendous views down there in the area. This house was a problem house in the neighborhood. Before Mr. Palzac bought it, there's an elderly woman who lived in the house. If you guys want to go down there and smell what, forty cats alike in a basement, it's an issue.
Problem?
There's a little bit.
Couple rats, though.
Mr. Palzac and his wife, Natchia, moving in there on hopes of raising a family, a very small Cape house, they'd like to go up one story. We're basically adding ten feet to this house. By looking around the property, I don't know if any of you have looked at it, I am not blocking anybody's views by going straight up.
We go every...
The city is directly behind us, so if anybody from the school committee wants to come down and talk about it, we can. If you have any questions, our architect, Rich, will answer any questions for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just going up, we keep the-
Yeah, we're staying on the exact corporate. We're going straight up.
You add the front farmers' porch, it brings the frontage down to what?
17.
17.
17-2, it was 17-2, right? Now you're going to add the porch?
17-2.
It's 17-2 with the front porch.
With the front porch. I don't think it was that far off.
I mean, basically, right now, on that property, it's basically the size of the overgrown bushes that are there now.
Thank you. Thank you. Is my question, any other? Any question?
No.
Nope. I did get handed a letter in some way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor?
My name's Richard Murchasik. I live at 24 Pleasant Street, Dorchester. And I just, just a quick correction for the record. Don't listen to me as an architect. I'm a designer. From a legal standpoint, I can't call myself a designer. I'm just a designer of credit for the vision.
Designer Richard.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call, forward. Do you have any other? No letter from the DPW. Anyone opposed around the side? I have a letter here that the neighbor brought up. It's rock because she couldn't wait for the meeting. It's here, ceiling, 95 Shore Ave. 725 17. We are residents of 79 Shore Ave, and we are the property owner. We do not grant permission to our neighbor for new extension to the farm reef. If they build a second story, then it will overlook in- Maybe overlook in-
At our pool.
At our pool.
Pool, pool.
Pool. That's a pool?
Do they have a pool?
Yeah, okay.
It's pool.
Pool, so. We would lose our privacy. The fires on knowledge in public area, they want, they want to extend it. Part of our land. As far as our knowledge, the area they want to extend is part of our land. She didn't want to stay here?
She wasn't here to begin with, her neighbor dropped it off.
Oh.
Can I speak about that?
No.
What are they extending?
Let me just watch some. We got a fire to stamp here, the start of our land.
Correct.
This is your land.
This is already.
This is my land.
This is I guess you want. You said it would extend onto our land.
There you go.
Hey, special incentive for driveway.
Oh, the driveway's on her land.
Yes, it is. Driveway exists?
Yes.
Driveway's already there, right?
Yes.
The driveway's on her property by this drawing.
What was, what I was informed, the woman that Belzak's bought the property from, the house that's still up, which has a 17-foot retaining wall.
I know, I'm talking about it with the I D.
With a 8-foot fence up above. How we're going to see into their pool is beyond me when we won't even be able to see over their fence. They, whoever built that house-
I'm not worried about it.
Went in, went in there.
Asking about the driveway.
The driveway. They, the original owners paved the driveway because they tore the driveway up to put their retaining wall and all that. They gave them, you know, quote unquote, "You can use this property."
I don't care because it's already there.
Right.
And you guys figure it out, so.
It's all, it's not on there. Yep.
It's not in the plot plan here.
The setbacks are being set for the existing.
Right, they're just going to have to go to Land Corps or something and fight it out because that's not our.
Take up the asphalt.
We just, we've got a front porch, a second floor going on the existing structure and a deck in the back.
Take up the asphalt, everybody.
Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
Question? Not, neither of opposed, no. I am undecided. But I received a copy of a dimensional form from the city.
Yep.
On that dimension, my name is Paul Cohen, 256 E Street. On this dimensional form, it says the side, existing side left setback is 9.1. And the requested one is 4.5.
It's wrong. No, 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 no.
No, and then it says the side right is 8.0.
Yep.
And the requested is 13.3.
Correct.
Now, I just-
I'll show you how.
Okay, and let's-
Here's the proposed deck, right?
Right.
So as the property line goes out, they're going to be 13 feet here, 13.6 there. This is the original house. They're moving the deck over here. They're five inches off is what it is.
I was confused when I, when they-
Yeah, you're going, "How's it get bigger?"
No, and when they said the dimensions were going to be the same, and then it just said here that it would change. Yes, that was just-
It is confusing.
That's why I-
But they can see how they did it as the property goes like that. Anyone else opposed or undecided? My call?
Well, since I came, hi, Carol Abbott, and I'm going to be a future neighbor at the 91 Shore Ave. And all favor having a great new family come on in. The neighbors that I have directly next to me who sent the letter over, I can understand their concern too. But the big thing, the big picture to me is when you buy a lot that's 6,192 or whatever it is, somewhere around there. And you know there are certain setbacks and certain rules. So I would just like to see people adhere to them. And I would like you guys to try to follow that out as much as possible.
They have a right to take their second story, keep in their footprint and go up.
Right.
They have that right. The only difference is they're like six inches off on this deck.
Right, but they are going to, you know, my house is setback 25 feet as most other houses on the street are. They already are not. And they're planning on coming forward more to the sidewalk.
Six, yeah.
I have a little bit of a problem with that. But I want them to be able to enjoy their property at the same time. But a couple cases ago, you said something about, you know, stuffing the turkey. That, you know, a lot of these lots, and there's another one right down the street from me on my side.
I don't think this is stuffing the turkey at all.
If there's even four feet of space left around the whole house and it's all house, it just doesn't fit. It just doesn't work for me.
But on that street-
But they told me it's just up.
If you take Shore Ave and look at most of those houses, some of them are 10 feet, 6 feet, 5 feet, going up the hill and going down. They're right, they're right in the property line on this side. On the other side, they got even 12, 15, 18 feet on that side. So, I mean, what is he asking for? He's asking like probably two-foot relief on the front so he can put a porch. Because he's bringing it in, in two feet. So he's not asking for really much at all. Very, very small relief and six inches in the back for that whole project. I think it's within reason personally.
But do people keep an eye on it? Is that-
It has to be like this. This is the plan submitted.
And so they come out, looks at it bigger?
Oh, yeah.
Have they abruptly went way over height limit and then they had to raise, you know, bring it down?
Exactly. And this plan submitted, it will be built like if it's approved. If it's not, it's not approved. If it is approved, it's plan submitted. He says this is what he's going to do. And he better do it.
I'm going to trust that.
We just had a guy take his porch down. Built the porch without a permit or without anything. And it was the hardest thing I've ever seen. The guy just put it down.
That's good. I do all pay attention.
And he asked them to rip it down, so.
Good luck.
We did have trouble with that. And it gets inspected afterwards. And the inspector has the plan. He makes sure they're right on and will cut it back when it's approved. So with that, last call, opposed or undecided? All have voted in favor. I think it's a nice project. It's a beautiful home down there. And two feet in the front and six inches in the back, I don't think is asking for a lot of relief. I think he's, he's not doing a three-foot overhang in front and back and sides and trying to make the upstairs enormous. I think he's doing a great job.
I too would be going in favor, Mr. Chairman.
I too. I think that's the last one, right? That's not been renovated yet.
You can have mine.
But I mean, that's the last one that hasn't been renovated, right? On the street, it looks like, yeah.
Mine's original and project.
I'll be voting in favor.
No, I think it's a reasonable project, small porch, not going crazy. Very much in favor.
In favor.
Mr. Chairman. Case number Z17-75. Joseph Lee for variance binding his second level front farmers' porch, red deck on purpose number 71 Shore Ave.